Good afternoon and welcome to the March 19th, 2014 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. First item on today's agenda is to approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2014 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have nine items on the consent agenda today, and I'll go through them individually. Marymount Springs, Section 2, preliminary plat for 30 lots on 13.1 acres, zone PUD, located along Marymount Springs Boulevard, Adams and Parks Investments. Puckett Station, Section 7, preliminary plat for 18 lots on 18.35 acres, zone PRD, located along Pretoria Run, Puckett Station Partnership Developer. Puckett Station, Section 5, final plat for 13 lots on 8.71 acres, zone PRD, located along Pretoria Run, Puckett Station Partnership Developer. Kingdom Ridge, Section 5, final plat for 53 lots on 22.92 acres, zone PUD, located along Rucker Lane, Swanson Developments Developer. Elam Wood, final plat for nine lots on 2.64 acres, zone RS8, located along Elam Road, Jerry Benefield Developer. Three Rivers Commercial, Section 2, preliminary plat for two lots on 1.5 acres, zone Commercial Fringe, located along New Salem Highway, Kilgore Dees Properties Developer. Three Rivers, Section 2, final plat for two lots on 1.5 acres, zone Commercial Fringe, located along New Salem Highway, Kilgore Dees Properties Developer. Kason Square, Section 7, lots 24 and 25, final plat for two lots on 1.36 acres, zone Commercial Fringe, located along Brandy's Circle, Kason Square LLC is developer. And finally, Wilson Bank and Trust Lot 1, site plan for 4,800 square feet, bank on 1.12 acres, zone PUD, located along Franklin Road, Wilson Bank and Trust Developer. Is there any members of the Planning Commission, anybody on the staff today, or anybody in today's audience that'd like any of these items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing no one come forward, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. As long as my voice holds out today. Puberty's a tough thing. Okay. We have one public hearing scheduled today, master plan amendment for McKnight Park, located at 2310 Memorial Boulevard, Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation is the applicant. Mr. Stradler.
Yes, sir. The subject property is McKnight Park located on Memorial Boulevard. It's located south of John Lane on the east side of Memorial. The Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department has endeavored to update the master plan for the property, taking into consideration changes that have occurred in the area, the park, material of its program of offerings, and opportunities for improvements for the park's functionality. The Parks Department has hired Loesn Associates, they're a firm recognizing Parks and Recreation planning, to prepare the update. During its regular meeting on February 5th, the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Commission considered and approved the plan. A copy of the plan is in your materials, and we hopefully can get a copy of it showing on the TV before you. The Plan Commission is to consider it now because part of this, of course, is a master plan, just like the airport master plan, because it shows how this property's going to be used, but it also has some area on the park land that is proposed to be considered as surplus property and possibly to be offered for disposal. So, the Plan Commission is going to be called upon to conduct a public hearing and then consider whether to adopt this plan. There is a second illustration, and if Ms. Green would show it, this second, well, that's not the right one, it would be that one. This illustration shows the area that's considered to be surplus property. The property is sandwiched between property that fronts on Memorial Boulevard, that is on Commercial Highway, and land that is owned by the airport and is scheduled for airport purposes. The property is located to the north of the new Walmart site. It currently has a single soccer field opponent and a parking lot. The parking lot does not really fit location-wise with the rest of the park because it's a little bit awkward in how it functions with the ball fields. This parking lot would be replaced by other parking areas that are proposed in the master plan. The matter of the, as a master plan requires that there be an advertisement 30 days in advance, and the advertisement was properly run in the Murfreesboro Post over 30 days ago, so we've met our advertising requirements. As a master plan, the Plan Commission will consider adoption, not just the recommendation, but consider adoption of this plan. It will also go to the City Council for its concurrent adoption as well, and that will come later. The City Council will also have a public hearing. With this, Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you to call it into order as a, for the public hearing. We do have with us Mr. Laney Goodman with the Parks and Recreation Department to answer questions that Mr. Ives or myself cannot answer.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, Mr. Goodman, do you have anything you'd like to add? Nothing. Okay. Thank you. In that case, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal. Nobody? Okay. Our closing public hearing. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission?
In this document, Mr. Chairman, the surplus property is included in this.
That's part of the plan, yes, sir. That would be, on this map, it would be the area that's colored yellow, plus an additional appendage that goes out to Memorial Boulevard.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no questions, we're ready for a motion.
Saying I recommend approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That completes the public hearing portion of our agenda this afternoon. Move on to the gateway design overlay. We have two items under that, first of which is Evergreen at the Avenue, final design review for 295,263 square feet, multifamily development on 21.9 acres, zone MU and GDO1, located along Robert Rose Drive, CIP Construction is the developer. Mrs. Green, Everwood, what did I say?
Evergreen.
Evergreen. Close.
Evergreen, that's similar.
I got the ever right anyway there. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. Our first item under the gateway design overlay portion of our agenda is for you to consider both site plan approval and final design review for a multifamily development which will be located just west of Robert Rose Drive. This property will be contiguous with Interstate 24, and you can see that on the plans before you, and it's located south of a proposed movie theater for which you have considered initial design review. This multifamily development is, has approximately 300, or has exactly 336 dwelling units on 21.9 acres, with a density of 15.3 dwelling units per acre, and the property is owned MU, that's Mixed Use District. This is actually the first site plan that we're reviewing under that new MU district. The plan has demonstrated that it does comply with our standards in the MU district, and it has less density than would be permitted. A maximum of 25 dwelling units per acre would be allowed under the MU district, and again, they have 15.3. There are 14 proposed apartment buildings, which are three stories tall, and I've got some illustrations of those. There's also a clubhouse, pool, cabana, summer kitchen, some electric vehicle charging stations, trash compactor, recycling area that will be amenities for the site. There are also some three-car garage, six three-car garages scattered throughout the site that the future residents could rent to store their vehicles. The design team has presented this to you at initial design review last month, and I think they got very good feedback. The majority of their materials, almost 100% of their materials is brick. They're representatives of the design team here, and I believe Mr. Scotty Burnick with Reagan Smith is going to introduce the project, go over what's changed. They have been able to address most of our staff comments. I think what's outstanding are small, and we could have you, or we could have them addressed prior to permits, and there's no need to hold up the final design review. If you have any questions for me, of course, I'll be glad to answer them, but at this time, I'll invite Mr. Burnick to the lectern.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. I'm Scotty Burnick with Reagan Smith. I'm here on behalf of the Carroll Companies. We're in agreement with all the staff comments and happy to answer any questions. Since last time, there weren't very many changes. We've worked through a few items with staff, both planning and transportation. If you have any specific questions, be glad to answer those at this time.
Okay. Any questions? Do you have just the one pedestrian access from the property to the movie theater property?
To the movie theater, yes, we're currently showing one pedestrian access.
Any other questions? Give us just a minute. These are big plans. If nobody's coming forward with any questions, we're ready for a motion when you are.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, I would recommend approval of the site plan and final design review.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item B, Stonecrest subdivision, Sections 1 and 2, preliminary plat for 82 lots on 19.51 acres, zone PUD and GDO1, located along Manson Crossing Drive, DR Horton is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our final item under the gateway design overlay portion of our agenda is for you to consider both initial and final design review and approval of the preliminary plat for the future Stonecrest subdivision. What's been presented to you is a master plan and a preliminary plat for Sections 1 and 2 of the Stonecrest subdivision. This site should be somewhat familiar to you. As in the recent past, you reviewed a site plan for proposed multifamily development on this property, the eastern portion of this property. You also considered a zoning change request to allow a portion of this property, which is, which you are reviewing this afternoon, to be developed with single-family detached dwellings as opposed to the multifamily dwellings that the zoning did approve. That has gone to both the Planning Commission and City Council, and the recommendation and decision has been unanimous that the zoning change is to be approved. So, this development is zoned PUD, Plan Unit District, and it's also a portion of the property is located in the Gateway Design Overlay District 1. The plan development did commit to the entire property meeting or Gateway Design Overlay standards and going through that review process, so of course, this is coming to you through that process. The proposed use is permitted per the amended zoning plan. The preliminary plat is for the review of 82 lots on 19.51 acres, and they've been subdivided into two sections, Section 1 and Section 2, and you can see that on the plans that you have. And the master plan would be for the entire development, which is 82, for the entire development. The plan development requires, divides this single-family development into two sections. One has a minimum lot size of 4,500 square feet and a minimum lot width of 51 feet, and the second has a minimum lot size of 5,400 square feet and a minimum lot width of 60 feet. Staff did prepare comments and provide those to the design team who've been able to address most of our staff comments. There are some lots that are currently 50 feet at the right-of-way. However, the design team has indicated to us that they are 51 feet at the setback line, and so stating that they meet that minimum 51-foot wide lot requirement. What staff would recommend is that in addition to any approvals being made, subject to all staff comments, that we also require a surveyor certificate, a surveyor certification for those lots that are very close to meeting that 51-foot minimum, and they can easily revise a note that's been placed on the preliminary plat to include those lots which are shown as 50 feet wide. And I have spoke with the engineer, Mr. Matt Taylor, and I'll invite him to the lectern this morning to go over that, and it seems that they are in agreement with adding that. Other than that, the plan seems to be in relatively good order. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them. At this time, I'll introduce Mr. Taylor.
Good afternoon. This plan pretty well matches exactly what we brought through with the PUD amendment, so although architecture will be consistent with the townhomes which were recently approved, so if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from Mr. Taylor? Thank you for letting me off easy today, Mr. Taylor.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff comments, specifically the ones Ms. Green mentioned.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to Plats and Plans, we have five items on there. Item 4E has been withdrawn, excuse me, 7E has been withdrawn. Item 7B, I will declare a conflict of interest on that. I will not participate in the discussion or the voting on that, and I will turn the chair of the Planning Commission over to Mr. Young, Vice Chairman Young, for that part of the meeting. So, we'll go to 7A, the Maples, master plan for 719 lots on 306 acres, and a preliminary plat for 55 lots on 25.98 acres, zone Commercial Highway, RS15, excuse me, RS15, RS12, RS10, and RS8, located along Manchester Highway. Maples Family LLC is developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our first master plan and preliminary plat that we're going to review under the Plats and Plans portion of our agenda is for you to consider master plan approval for a 306-acre property located along Highway 41 or Manchester Highway. It's 306 acres, it has several different zoning districts on it, and that would be CH, and then RS15, RS12, RS10, and RS8. And those RSs stand for Single Family Residential District. So, there are several different zoning classifications on this property. You're probably familiar with it because just last year, it was annexed, and zoning change was approved by both you and the City Council. And so, this is the master plan submission. For you to consider approving the master plan for this property, it's also for you to consider approving Section 1, or the Section 1 of the subdivision, and Section 1 consists of 56 lots on 25.98 acres, and this portion of property is zoned RS8, Single Family Residential District. These lots have a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and it appears that those proposed in the preliminary plat do meet that minimum lot size. This property is also located adjacent to Rutherford County's school site, a middle school and future high school, and you can see that on the ortho photo. And the site is located here. We did ask for them to consider a connection to the school, and I think it is Rutherford County School's opinion that they do not want a vehicle access from the subdivision into the school site. We know that 719 lots is a lot of lots, and so, from the studies that we've done, we know that children, there are more children that result from single-family detached homes than other types of development, so we expect that there will be a considerable amount of school-aged children that will be attending those schools. So, because there can be no vehicle connection, the design team has made accommodations for a pedestrian connection, possible pedestrian connection. That's not something that would be done with the preliminary plat for Section 1, it's something that's in a future phase, and I think staff has discussed this, and we fully expect the future, the development of this subdivision to take years, and it wouldn't surprise us if it were 10 years or more for the entire site to be developed because we know it'll be done in phases. So, that will be in the future, but just looking ahead, we wanted that to be considered on the master plan, and they've actually made a potential connection on the plans. You can see that. Also, of course, this is a very large subdivision and requires a traffic study to be submitted so that we can determine what street or roadway improvements would be required to support this development. The design team is working on preparing that traffic study, but they don't have it ready yet. We don't think that it is required with the first section because the first section will only result in 56 lots. They've committed to getting that to us before they ask for approval of a Section 2 in a subdivision, and so, we're comfortable with that approach, and that's something similar that we've done to other subdivisions in the past. Of course, that traffic study will outline what kind of improvements we'd expect to see on Manchester Pike. I expect there'll be some turn lane improvements in the future, but not required at this time. There's also been a plan to show future subdivision signs to be located within the subdivision. Of course, that's subject to the approval of our Building Co. Department. They review the sign ordinance. They show three subdivision entrance signs, and I believe the one that's located in the center median will likely need to be removed, but the two that are located on private property on either side can remain. The engineer and design team have been able to address most of the comments that we've submitted to them. I will note that they still need to correct the setbacks that were listed for Section 1. The property is zoned RS8, and they've got, I think, setbacks listed for RS10 property, which are more than required in RS8, but they may want to get that corrected. There are some other elements that they need to work on, but they're relatively minor, and we believe that they'll be corrected when the, or they'll be addressed when the construction plans are submitted, which would be the next step for this subdivision. There's a representative of the design team in the audience. I don't know if they have anything they'd like to share at this time. Mr. Mark Lee, he's shaking his head no. If you do have questions from him, he's available, of course, as well as a representative of the owner. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. If you do recommend approval, please make it subject to all staff comments.
Mr. Young.
Ms. Green.
Yes, sir.
In the city of Murfreesboro, we have a situation that could be similar to this, where we have a pedestrian access to the school system from a major subdivision, but we don't have vehicle access to that. Sometimes people turn around in driveways and block driveways and back up down the street to turn around in this. I think it would be wise for us to make sure that that doesn't happen in this access. I know it may be eight to 10 years from now, but I think that's important, and I know it can create a problem in the situation that we have in the city today.
Yes, sir. And we, when we had our staff meetings, we discussed that, and basically felt there were a couple options. Design nothing and maybe have what we call goat paths appear where kids are walking through private property, or design something that would be able to work. I'm familiar with this situation. You're talking about Murfreesboro, and I understand why that would be. The residents would not be happy with that. Well, certainly, when we look at the design, see if there's anything we can do to mitigate that or minimize those concerns.
But this will be in one of the last sections built, so it'll be down the road.
It is down the road. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We just, if there is no connection, it requires everybody lives in the subdivision to drive back onto Manchester Pike to turn into the subdivision, turn into the school so that it affects the right-of-way, so we're trying to think of ways to minimize the impact to Manchester Pike, which is also a state highway.
Is the staff comfortable with not providing a street access to the property? It would seem to me that that's inconsistent with good planning.
We would like to have that connection. I think with, if Rutherford County school system is not allowing it, I'm not sure where our next steps would be, but of course, as planning staff, we certainly would encourage that.
With this many homes that will be eventually built in there, and they're of the size and price range that I think will generate a lot of children, trips to the school daily from there, for, to have all those people, having to drive out on Manchester Highway, turn right and go down, turn right again, and then back out left, get back home, it just, it just doesn't make sense.
Mr. Lamb, Ms. Plan Commission, you're absolutely correct. We, as a staff, we see that, and we agree. The, there are other considerations that the school has, like security of their campus, the ability to manage the traffic coming onto the campus, and the, the security of these schools and the children. They feel that that's more important to them at this time. We will revisit that issue with them. There will be opportunities in the future. The connection does not need to be in this first phase. It will come in subsequent phases. So, we'll revisit that with them. And there may be a better way to approach it. That's, especially with the second high school campus that's coming, there will be a high school just beyond the middle school, and there may be an opportunity to make a properly designed street connection. After all, when they did design the schools, this property was not on the radar for development. Now that it is, there may be an opportunity that didn't exist when we look at the next plan.
I just think it'd be in public interest if, if they would reconsider that decision at some point, so. Any other questions?
Question, Mr. Chairman. Take it, page 2 of 18 in our, it says it's the master plan.
Yes.
Is, don't we normally see like sections or something? I mean, is it all just divided up just by the RS10, RS12, RS8? I mean, or is that, is that just, it's just a little...
Sometimes they are able to show the sections. At this point, they don't know enough about their sewer design and their utility design to be able to, to be authoritative on what those sections would be, and rather than to show them and know that they are just, just missing. And also, in the future, they may be able to secure funding if the demand is there for larger sections than today. Today, it's very rare for us to see a subdivision of over 50 lots. In the future, we may be going back to what was the norm back in the mid-2000s, when we were seeing 75 and 100 lot subdivisions as the norm. So, they, they didn't feel that they were ready to, to show sections.
And we just...
The main thing on the, on the master plan, Ms. Jones and members of the Plan Commission, look at the big picture on the master plan, the connectivity to the other properties. For instance, the existing street to the east, we talked about not having through traffic there. Well, we're gonna have, we're cutting it down, so it's, we indicated at the time that the zoning was, that we would see the connection, but we didn't want to see it as a collector street, and that would be over in this area right here. So, they're demonstrating that they're being sensitive to that issue. Notice also that a couple of other opportunities, they're choosing locations for stubborn streets into a joint property to allow for that future development. Notice that there are cul-de-sacs, but this development is not overwhelmed with them. Notice that the street pattern allows for a good internal connectivity, and then connectivity back to the main highway. Those are... Those are the master plan issues that you should focus in on at this stage. The actual sections are not as important as the big picture view of how this will fit in with the future development of the community.
I was just having a hard time seeing the RS 8 versus RS 10 versus RS 12 and picking it all out. It's just, and so I take it they all are in the right spot. And the ones that are RS 8 are all 8,000 square foot lots and all that good stuff.
Mr. Lee will tell us that that is the case. And he's nodding his head vigorously.
It's perfect, I'm sure.
Has he got any colored pencils with him that he could color those? He didn't hear that.
He heard you just ignore it.
Just ignore it.
Any other questions?
I think that the staff is comfortable with the master plan. The things that we were concerned about were the connectivity, the big picture view. This discussion about the school is something that I'm glad that you all had because it will help us when we return back to that issue. And it also helps us to show the residents in the subdivision to the east that we listen to them and that we've tried to take into consideration their fears and concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Let's try the vote again, because I don't think, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries this time, I do believe. At this time, I'll pass the chair to Mr. Young.
Our next item is Trevalka Square, Section 2, a master plan for 39 lots on 13.6 acres and preliminary plat for 19 lots on 7.29 acres, zoned RS 12 along Garcia Boulevard, T&L developer, development developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to consider approval of a master plan amendment for 39 lots on 13.6 acres and preliminary plat approval for Section 2 of Trevalka for 19 lots on 7.29 acres. The property is currently zoned RS 12, and that's Single Family Residential District, with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square foot lots, and is located along Garcia Boulevard. The master plan amendment will be to consider changing the lot size of the lots located in Section 3, which is shown on the master plan. A rezoning request will be required to be made to you and approved by both Planning Commission and City Council before this master plan can be effective. However, you can approve it in its preliminary stage. This is also to consider preliminary plat approval for just Section 2. And Section 2 does appear that all the lots meet the minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. There were some, several questions we had regarding the sewer design for Section 2, which would require it to extend through Section 3, would also require the street construction and subgrade construction to extend in that sewer to Section 2, which we thought the developers should consider prior to moving forward. The engineer for the project has redesigned the sewer so that it isn't extending from Section 3 as previously submitted. So we would, of course, want this, any approval of this to be subject to the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department approving this change in the sewer plan. If they have any problems with that, we'll have to bring the plan back to you, of course. Otherwise, I think that if you make any approval, subject to all staff comments, this plan should be in fairly good shape. There are also some modifications that need to be made to the grading plan. It still has some work to be done on it. However, that is something that we can have addressed prior to the, or with the submission of construction plans to the engineering department. If you have any questions for this, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, any approval you make, we'd like for you to make it subject to all staff comments.
Is there a presentation by, no?
No, sir.
Okay, good. Any questions for Ms. Green or?
Yes.
Ms. A. Lot or?
In Section 2, this, what I take is the detention area that's kind of to the north on, of Section 3. You know, it's kind of drawn in. Should those lot lines still be extended down through there? I mean, it looks like they're parts of Lot 58. Will they still be part of those lots even if they're in a different section, if they're the detention area? I mean, how does that work?
They will. They'll be until the Section 3 is created. Of course, it'll be all one lot. But that detention area will be the back portions of three lots.
When Section 3 is created, it'll be all one lot. What do you mean?
Until it is. Right now, it's Section 3, which is what you see along Garcia Boulevard, the southern half, is just a single lot. And it can't be subdivided until the zoning change is approved. So for now, when Section 2 is developed, which is what's to the north, that'll be one lot. But in the future, when it's subdivided, it will be a part of three separate lots.
So I guess my answer is, any other questions?
They can't create 10,000 square foot lots because the zoning wouldn't allow it. And so that's why it would, the plat could not be approved. And Section 3 shows almost exclusively, well, they're 10,000 square foot lots. And the property is zoned RS 12.
But Section 2 is 12,000?
Section 2 is, they're all 12,000 square foot or larger.
There's no change in Section 2.
There is no change in Section 2.
And just as a heads up, later on the agenda, we will have a zone application for that property to be zoned to RS 10. And we'll be asked to schedule a public hearing for that.
Okay, any further questions? What are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Chairman, you have the gavel.
One abstention.
They'll make you show one abstention. Let the record show one abstention.
Thank you, Ms. Young. We're ready for 7C. Now Burger King, an integrated site plan for 2,642 square feet, a restaurant on .79 acres, zoned commercial fringe, located along New Salem Highway and Cason Lane. Abbott Land Company is the developer, Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is for you to consider site plan review and approval for a new fast food restaurant to be located south of New Salem Highway and west of Cason Lane. And you can see the property identified on the screen before you now. What's shown as the site is currently one lot. And as proposed, a subdivision has been submitted to divide this into two lots. And Lot 1 would be the lot that, for the Burger King restaurant, which is proposed on the site. The proposed restaurant will be approximately 2,642 square feet, and it would actually be located on the northernmost portion of the property. The preliminary and final plats for this were considered as items under the consent agenda. So you have reviewed them earlier in the, in the meeting. The property is zoned CF, that's Commercial Fringe District. And the proposed use is permitted in the CF district. And it does meet the design requirements in that CF zone that requires more than 200 feet to be between the property line of any properties zoned for single-family purposes and the speaker box. So the proposed speaker box will be more than 200 feet from any residential development. The site will have a, as proposed, will have a ride-in, ride-out onto the state highway, New Salem Highway. I'll get to the plan in just a moment to show that to you. And you can see that along New Salem Highway. Also proposed is a full access along Cason Lane that lines up with the access across the street of the existing development. And that will be a shared access drive with the proposed Lot 1, Burger King, the future proposed Lot 2, and also the property to the south. There's an existing access easement that allows there to be a shared access. And of course, reducing the number of driveways would be, is a plus for the site. We made several staff comments to the site, one of which was to continue the sidewalk from where it terminates at the end of Lot 1 to all the way along Lot 2. The property is being subdivided and as such is required to participate in any improvements to the street. And adding the sidewalk would be a street improvement. The applicant has indicated that they desire to not build the portion of the sidewalk with Lot 2. And so we can allow that so long as they post a surety for that to be developed. So they can choose either to build a sidewalk with a site plan or to post a surety with our engineering department for the future construction of that sidewalk, which is required due to the subdividing of the property. Also, there are some photographs, and I'll actually pass them around to you. Illustrations that show you the proposed architecture for the building. It is a mostly EFS building with a brick water table. It's one-story, 21 feet high. They've submitted a sightline study to show that the rooftop-mounted equipment should not be visible from either right of way. Of course, this is a corner lot, so there are two fronts, the front facing Cason Lane and the front facing New Salem Highway. This is in a very visible part of our community, along a major arterial and a state highway. And so what they proposed to us isn't quite, doesn't have the quality that we have seen in recent developments. What I have provided to you are some photographs that I took of some very good examples of Burger Kings that have been built in our community within the past few years. There are two photographs, and there's one on the screen now, of the one along South Church Street. You can see that. And then the Burger King that's located along Memorial Boulevard, which are two most recent structures. And those are really good examples. As a matter of fact, when people come into our community wanting to construct a fast food restaurant, we recommend that they take a look at these as good examples. And so, of course, we would want them to have, continue building something that is a good quality and fits into our community. I did take photographs of the oldest Burger King we have in Murfreesboro, located on Middle Tennessee Boulevard, only to show you the color pattern. The roof line, of course, of what's proposed is different, but with that brick base and the beige EFS, looks very similar to what is on Medical Center Parkway. So that just helps give you a visualization of what it possibly can look like. The engineer for the project has told me that the design team isn't really wanting to commit to any improvements to the building as it's been submitted to us because they have some financial unknowns. I would recommend, of course, that they do improve the building. I think it can be done easily, and I don't think that it can cost that much. And if the concern, of course, is adding masonry, which would be the best option, then possibly they can contact me and we can see what we can do for some lower-cost options. They could, of course, change the cornice of the building, and that could improve the design. They could work with the colors and maybe work with that red band, which we saw in the photograph that you saw on Middle Tennessee Boulevard. You can see in the first two examples where they have modified that red band. So I think there are things that they can do to improve it. If they don't add any more masonry, which of course would be a better option, this is located on Cason Lane and New Salem Highway, so it is very visual. And what we see constructed in that area does have a primarily brick facade, so I think that it would be fitting the character of the area. So those are the additional comments we have. We did want to mention that the Lot 2 that's being created, we've asked for some notes to be placed on the subdivision plat that says that we will review any access to Lot 2 because we don't want, when it's created, for it to cause any backup of traffic into Cason Lane. And we spoke with the engineer, and he's aware of that, and that note will be added. So we'll, of course, study the access for Lot 2 when we see a site plan for that. So other than that, I'll invite Mr. Matt Taylor, who is representing the applicant, to the lectern. And any approval you should make should be conditioned upon all staff comments.
Mr. Taylor.
Ms. Ely or Ms. Green is right. We don't, we will add the note for the plat regarding access, so there's not a conflict that's detrimental to the right of way of Cason Lane. The sidewalk surety issue, we don't have any problem there. There may be some existing surety there, so we're gonna work with Mr. Griffith on the construction of that sidewalk or placing additional surety so it's not constructed now and torn up later whenever that site does develop. As far as the architecture, I've talked with the owner and the architect. We do have some abnormal situations on the site itself. They've had a geotechnical investigation. There are, there's some existing soil, some existing fill there that's unsuitable. It's gonna be removed. It's not, it's not usable for the building itself. We're gonna have to raise the site to bring it up to road grade and then have underground detention. So all those things have a financial impact, and he won't know that full impact until he has put the project out the bid. So he's hesitant to start increasing price elsewhere. I did speak to him this afternoon after, or earlier today after Ms. Green contacted me. He doesn't mind changing some colors of the awnings and things like that. He'll work with her on that. The red band, he said, was a proprietary, basically that that's what Burger King requires. It's about 15 inches tall, which does not seem extraordinary. I went back and measured what we did at Tiger Market. I think we allowed about 12 inches over there for their red stripe in the gateway. He said that was a very important part to Burger King. But as far as color of awnings, you know, maybe changing up some colors of the EFS or whatnot, he'd be happy to work with her on that.
Ms. Young.
Ms. Green, you mentioned the fact that the drive-through met the 200-foot requirement for not being within, near a residential. Is there a residential near this?
To the south, further along Cason Lane, are some single-family homes, but they are a considerable distance from this property.
So I'm worried about the noise from the drive-through squat box. Is that gonna be something that, that these houses are far enough away that they won't hear that?
I believe they are. In addition, when the properties that are between the Burger King and the homes develop, that'll also add an additional buffer. But yeah, they are quite a distance from the site. I would say the closest one is more than 700 feet.
Is there an opportunity to put in a screening of vegetation in there to help alleviate that problem?
Yes, sir. There is that option.
We've also got that speaker box oriented toward, away from the residential, so it's oriented toward the commercial, that is, to the west, toward the existing Dollar General that was recently built out there. So the noise maker itself is oriented away from the residences, which should help there as well.
So westbound traffic on Highway 99 has to enter from Cason Lane only?
Yes, sir.
And then somebody leaving the property, if they want to go west on 99, they have also go back on 90, onto Cason Lane?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, just looking, and I might be looking at the wrong copy, Matt, but, okay, I see it now, no left turn sign there.
We tried to mimic the design of the, I think it's a CVS that is opposite corner of this property. It's got a ride-in, ride-out on its Highway 99 entrance. So we tried to mimic that. I think Mr. Bolachander pointed that out as a good example along this route.
And what corner is it on?
It's on the southwest. So if you're headed out of town, it's on the left, away, away from town.
And across the street from the Tiger Market?
Yes, sir. Directly across.
Immediately adjacent to the Dollar General that has just been constructed.
Yes.
Well, but ingress and egress off of Highway 99 is obviously problematical, but I think you've done about all you can do with it right there.
And we'll have to run that through TDOT as well after, after this, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one question, Ms. Green. Do you feel like this can all be worked out?
I think the site elements can definitely be worked out prior to issuance of any building permits. I'm not sure what the commitments are as far as redesigning the building itself or improving the exterior elevation. Haven't had any conversations with the architect or the developer of the property. They haven't contacted me, so I don't know if that's something that we could say that we bring it back to Planning Commission when they're, when they have more information about the site. Because I think right now, they're just a little concerned about the unknowns and what they don't know about the property, so they're hesitant to make any commitments. So the option is that we can bring the architecture back to the Planning Commission when they have more information, or you can, I guess, make it subject to them, requiring them to bring it back to me prior to making any, any applications to the Building and Code Department. And if we can't work it out, then bring it back to you. I guess those would be two of the three options you have.
Mr. Taylor. Several years ago, a local hotel, what was the one?
Hampton Inn.
Hampton Inn. Hampton Inn came into town, and they thought the Planning Commission was pretty hard on them. And we made some very good improvements. And when they came into town, the three owners came in and they cut the ribbon and they turned to the mayor and said, "I'm really glad you made us do these improvements. We've got one of the finest hotels in the southeast." Would you pass that on to your, to your developer and?
I certainly will. He, and he, he wants to improve that, but with what he has found through his investigation so far, he's hesitant. But I will certainly pass that along.
Ms. Green, we wanna, we might wanna look at this again. So what should we do?
I think you should make your approval subject to all staff comments, including them working with staff regarding the architecture. If we can't come to an agreement, we'll bring it back to you.
I'm comfortable with that.
Is that her motion?
So what you'd like to move, Ms. Green? So what she'd like to move, Ms. Green?
I would like you to do that.
Ms. Young, you want to say what she said?
I will make that motion.
Motion, Mrs. Green's made, motion is made. Second by Mr. Clark. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The Villas at the Cloister Phase 2, site planned for 18 multifamily units on 1.78 acres on PRD located along Pearlou Lane. O'Brien Lloyd Ventures is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is for you to consider a site plan approval for a Phase 2 of the Villas at Cloisters. The Villas at Cloisters is a part of the multifamily portion of the Cloister Plan Development. You can see on the ortho photo that it shows some existing single-family attached dwellings and located along Pearlou Lane and Brooklyn Court. This would be an extension, of course, of that multifamily development. You can see what's located to the south are some single-family detached homes, and that's the single-family portion of the Cloisters development. What you have before you is a site plan for 18 new multifamily units located on 1.78 acres, zone PRD, and it's planned residential district. The PRD zone would allow the development of these structures as an extension of the Villas at Cloisters development, so the use is permitted. The site will have access to Veterans Parkway through the existing private drive identified as Pearlou Lane, and the proposed buildings will need to comply with the PRD requirements. There's a planned residential district, that program book that was submitted to and approved by both Planning Commission and City Council. This space consists of 18 two-story buildings with six three-bedroom units and 12 two-bedroom units. They've taken a photograph of what is existing on-site, and I'll go ahead and pass that around, so you can see what's proposed. This is consistent with the approved plan development. We would like to point out that this is an extension of the plan as approved by Planning Commission, City Council. And before any building permits will be issued, we want the applicant, the developer, to confirm that this will become a part of the existing HOA, Homeowners Association. If not, if this will not be a continuation of the existing development in HOA, then it may require an amendment to the plan development. So that's something that we'll need prior to any building permits. And that was not something listed in, not listed in that detail in your staff comments, so we'll need that confirmation. But we think that you could probably approve these plans now with that being worked out in the future. Staff also asked for the developer and the design team to provide information on the existing trash compactor that's shown on the plans and demonstrate that it is adequate to serve this multifamily development and the existing multifamily development, which, of course, is the same development, and that it has properly screening with masonry enclosure and evergreen materials. The applicant's response was that they want to evaluate it with construction. We, of course, would require, prior to building permits, that they see what's in the field. And if they want to use a dumpster at this time, which I think, according to the ortho photos that I've looked at, is probably a dumpster on-site, they can continue to use a dumpster so long as their count is under 75 units. They will need to install a proper screen that would include the wall and the plant material. They may choose to go ahead at this time and put a compactor in, because a compactor will be required when they reach that 75-dwelling unit mark. But rather than just saying they'll work it out with construction, the plans need to address solid waste management, and we think that they can do that prior to the issuance of any building permits or approval of their plans, and they can work that out with staff. It's fairly routine reviewing those enclosures. They've also need to work on a few of their landscape comments, but I think that those can be addressed prior to the issuance of any building permits. So we would, of course, recommend that you make your approval subject to all staff comments, including that they confirm that this will be a part of the existing HOA. If they can't do that, then they need to go through the zoning change process. And also, just to reiterate what is in the staff comments, that they will have to come up with a plan for that solid waste management to make sure it conforms to what was approved in both the plan development and is required in our zoning ordinance. If any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and I believe there is a representative here of the developer. If not, I can answer their questions.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
This is just really a continuation of what they...
Yes, sir.
Is there room for a compactor when they hit their threshold of units?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We're ready for a motion.
Seeing Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Like I said before, Item 7E has been withdrawn, so we'll move on to Number 8, mandatory referrals. Two items under that today, the first of which is a mandatory referral to relocate existing water, sewer, and drainage easements located within the Stonecrisp Single Family Subdivision. D.R. Horton, developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. The first mandatory referral that we're going to consider on today's agenda is for you to consider approval of the relocation of some existing water lines, Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Lines, sewer lines, and drainage easements that are currently located within the Stonecrisp Single Family Subdivision. You reviewed the master plan and preliminary plat for Sections 1 and 2 of the Single Family Subdivision. You are aware, I believe, that development began on this property several years ago, and with the decline in our economy, this became a casualty of that decline, and so development ceased. D.R. Horton is now, of course, the owner of the property and wants to pick up where it was left off and develop the property. However, with the changes in their development plan, that will require some changes in utilities. There are currently utilities in the ground or easements that have been created. The engineer for the project has submitted an illustration for you showing those easements that are no longer necessary, and they identified, of course, with the hatch pattern. Staff has studied this and are in agreement with their request and would ask that you approve this as an action of mandatory referral. We'll also take it to City Council for their approval, and the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Board will be required to approve the relocation and abandonment of any easements that deal with their sewer or water lines. This seems to be fairly routine, and this request, we would ask that you make it subject to staff comments, including the applicant making, submitting any of the documents that we need, that may be surveys or meets-and-bounds descriptions of the changes.
Any questions? Ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item 8B is a mandatory referral for surplus of right-of-way from widening of Florence Road north to Cap Davis Court. Mrs. Carrie Latham, on behalf of Black Eagle Holdings LLC, is the applicant. Ms. Redalot.
Yes, sir. The subject property is located along the west side of Florence Road, just north of the intersection with Old Nashville Highway. This property was formerly the roadbed of Old Nashville Highway before it was reconstructed by the city in conjunction with Rutherford County several years ago. This, as a result of the reconstruction, we reconfigured the intersection with Old Nashville Highway, made it a much improved intersection, and signaled it. When we did that, we shifted the road and the, what is now Cap David, Davis Drive, had to be realigned at the intersection with Florence Road. So there's a sliver of land that is really surplus at this property, at this point. We have received a request for us to, for the city and the county to abandon it, and as we look it over, initially, we see no real problems. We did do our due diligence to contact the various city and county departments, or rather, the various city departments, and we have found a couple of things that cause us to have a need for at least an easement. Number one, there is a, almost all of this is continuing to be used for stormwater drainage. So if we abandon the right-of-way, we would want to keep an easement for stormwater drainage. There is a very large diameter water line that the Solid Day Utility District has. So if we abandon it, we would need to keep an easement for the CUD line. There is a electric line and a, with guide wires and anchors to guide the pole at the, on the property or adjacent to the property. We would need to keep easements for those. I have here a list of conditions that staff would recommend. With these conditions that I'm handing out to you, we would recommend approval. And they include that the applicant must provide the city a survey for the area requested to be abandoned with both a meets-and-bounds description in software, in Microsoft Word format, and a graphic depiction. We would need to keep a public drainage reserved to the city and county that will cover the entire area. A water line easement for CUD. A utility easement for Murfreesboro Electric Department for the electric line, guides, and anchors. The owner must subdivide the property to combine it permanently with the property adjacent to it that they own. The owner must secure concurrence from Rutherford County for the abandonment, and the matter should be considered by the City Manager's Land Acquisition Committee to determine if or how much compensation should be paid for the property. There may be no compensation expected, but I think that before it went to the City Council, we would want to include, own that committee to allow us to make a recommendation. Bear in mind that when the city acquired right-of-way to realign Old Nashville Highway, we did pay by the square foot to the Horton family for right-of-way directly across the street and at considerable cost to taxpayers. So if there's any expectation from the city manager that we recover some of our costs, we need to have that recommendation for the City Council. If the Planning Commission approves this, we would take it on to the City Council after it's visited with the City Manager's Land Acquisition Committee. And the applicant and, I guess, her client are present in the front row, and they have received a copy of these conditions.
Any questions?
Seeing Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That completes the mandatory referrals portion of our agenda, moving on to new business, first of which is a rezoning application for approximately 4.62 acres along Warrior Drive to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to RM16. Mark Pertle is applicant.
Yes, sir. Ms. Green, we'll get our illustration up. This property is located on the west side of Warrior Drive backing up to the lake. It's the area that's colored in purple. It's currently zoned Commercial Highway. The applicants wish to add this property to the area that's already zoned to RM16 for development of a multifamily complex. This property is, both actually, both tracks are considerably encumbered by a utility easement that crosses the property and also by a stormwater conveyance that crosses the property. This needs to be scheduled for a public hearing. At this point, we do not have any public hearings scheduled for the April 2nd Planning Commission meeting, and that would be an appropriate date. If there's any discussion, I think that Mr. Huddleston is present to answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
Any questions or discussion? Now we're ready to set the public hearing.
Chairman, I recommend we set a public hearing for April 2nd.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item B is a rezoning application for approximately 2.0 acres along Kason Lane to be rezoned from OG to OGR. Kent Air, on behalf of Keach Investments, is the applicant. Ms. Redalot.
Yes, sir. The subject property is located to the west of Kason Lane, south of Salem Highway, Highway 99. This property is between the Three Rivers Assisted Living Facility and the Kason Lane. The property is zoned OG. OG does not allow for assisted living facilities to be developed on it. However, the Keach Investments desires to expand the Creekside development with an assisted living element. This is almost ideal. To achieve their purpose, they have requested the property be rezoned to OGR, which does allow an assisted living, the residential element, and they have made this application. We need to schedule a public hearing for it. If you have any questions, staff or Mr. Ross is present, or Ross Bradley is present to answer your questions about it.
Maybe we set a public hearing April 2nd.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ms. Young, once again, I'm going to pass the chair to you.
All right. Our next item is a rezoning application for approximately 6.31 acres along Garcia Boulevard to be rezoned from RS12 to RS10. Mr. Jamie Taber for TNL Development Company, applicant. Ms. Green.
Actually, Mr. Redalot.
Ms. Redalot, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. This property is located to the, well, on part of the property we looked at earlier today for a master plan for residential subdivision. It's currently zoned to RS12. The application is to rezone the area that's colored blue to RS10. Since the original master plan for the subdivision was approved, the city's stormwater regulations have come into play, which have caused some of the land, although it's included in lots, is having to be placed in an easement that's encumbered and is not available for building footprints. Also, for some other reasons, the applicants are asking that this property be rezoned. The number of lots is not great. It will actually be very minor. Three or four lots is about what staff calculates should be the difference in yield. This needs to be scheduled for a public hearing. We have with us Mr. Bill Huddleston, who will answer questions on behalf of the applicant if I cannot answer them. Ms. Young, yes?
I was going to say, how many applicant, how many lot variants did you say it would be from the 12 to the 10?
I'm calculating maybe three or four at the most will be the increase in yield.
So this is really a very, even though it is a changing zoning, it's a very minor changing zoning, is that fair statement?
It will be very minor, and in fact, at the conclusion of the development, it's predictable that nobody will ever know the difference by driving down the street. It's going to be the identical type of houses. It'd be transparent.
And the stormwater really is what's pushing this, and the applicant had no control over that whatsoever.
That is part of it. There's other issues, but stormwater is one of them that has really changed since the time that the original subdivision was laid out. Identical street pattern as if it were all RS12.
Any questions, comments from staff, Planning Commission?
If none, I recommend we set a public hearing for April 2nd.
Second.
Now the motion and the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes.
One abstention.
And with, the record show one abstention. Mr. Lamb, you are the chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Item D, annexation petition for approximately 0.77 acres along Old Fort Parkway, Franklin Road. Mrs. Marcela Ann Anderson, executor for the State of Lois Jean Richardson, is the applicant. Ms. Redalot.
Yes, sir. The subject property is located just to the west of the intersection with Gresham Lane. It's immediately adjacent to and surrounded on three sides by land owned by the Franklin Road Baptist Church. The owners have a single-family residence on the property. They are now, actually, it is now in the state, and they are requesting that the property be annexed. There will be a companion zoning application to Commercial Highway. That will be the next item on the agenda. The planning staff is already working towards preparing an annexation feasibility study in Planet Services. Looks like it'd be a pretty easy annexation to effect. The property is contiguous with the city limits. It is in the city's urban growth boundary, and no other properties must be annexed in order to affect this annexation. The matter will need to be scheduled for a public hearing. You'll need to have a public hearing on the Planet Services before making a recommendation to the City Council.
Will you be ready on the 2nd of April?
I believe we will be.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for April 2nd.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item E, zoning application for approximately 0.77 acres along Old Fort Parkway, Franklin Road to be zoned Commercial Highway simultaneous annexation. Mrs. Marcela Ann Richardson, executor for the State of Lois Jean Richardson, applicant. Ms. Redalot.
Yes, sir. Along with the request for, or petition for annexation, the owners have made application for the property to be zoned Commercial Highway. You'll note on the zoning map that's on the television before you, the property diagonally across the street and to the east is zoned Commercial Highway. The property, one parcel removed to the east that is at the intersection with Gresham Lane, is also zoned Commercial Highway. Other property in the area to the north is zoned Commercial Local. The church property, it's not in the city, so it's really, at this point, we have not established a zoning classification for it. So it could be Commercial Highway, or it could be some other classification in the future. The application has been made. We'll need to respond to it. It would be appropriate for it to be considered the same night as the matter of annexation, so that would be April 2nd. We need to schedule for a public hearing.
Maybe we set a public hearing April 2nd.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And the final item under new business is a zoning application for approximately 4.1 acres along Wilkinson Pike to be rezoned from RS15 to mixed use. Mr. Thomas E. Smith, on behalf of CM Gatton, is the applicant. Ms. Redalot.
Yes, sir. The subject property is located along the south side of Wilkinson Pike, and it would be to the west of Willow Oak Trail. Willow Oak Trail is the street that intersects with Robert Rose Drive, just to the south. The property is the property that's colored orange on the illustration on the television. The city went through a process of zoning the property to the south to MU earlier this year or late last year as we created that district. year or late last year, as we created that district. This property was not included at that time, in part because there was no known plan, and the applicant was actually agreeable to moving forward with what we had. That area was somewhat of a buffer zone. And I kind of made a, or actually, as we were laying these out, he actually discussed with me including this property at that time, but since the public hearings had already been scheduled, we didn't, we couldn't go back and add without, going back to square one. So we kind of got off without him. I told him that some future date, he would be welcome to make an application for this property, and now he is doing it. So he is asking that the property be zoned to MU, along with the rest of his property. The property, and you don't see it here, and we will hope to have illustrations at the Planning Commission public hearing, but there are some very large easements that do cross the property. There's a very large sewer easement that crosses the property about 50 feet off of Wilkinson Pike that will affect any kind of buildings running on Wilkinson Pike. There's also a very large TVA line that crosses the eastern part of this property, near the intersection with the Willow Oak Trail. You can see a little bit of where it is by the way the property lines in the subdivision to the north and to the west align. There's sort of a diagonal property line there, and you can see that that would extend over onto this property. So even though it might be rezoned to MU, it's not going to allow a strip type of development because of the easements, and it will also still affect setbacks. Additionally, the Wilkinson Pike buffer, the 100-foot-wide Wilkinson Pike buffer is not being changed. It's still going to be respected and will still be in effect. So the applicant has made an application for this property to be rezoned to MU. The planning commission will need to schedule this for a public hearing. And Mr. Smith is present, or and Mr. Taylor is present to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Taylor, that's a 100-foot buffer along there. That's the largest in the city, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Not only is it large, it's also the most restrictive.
And then the lot is complicated by easements that are already, that are in there to start.
Yes, they are.
This land actually has limited use.
Particularly in the area close to Wilkinson Pike.
April 2nd. Move we set a public hearing, April 2nd.
Second.
All in favor indicate the same, aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That completes New Business. Moving on to staff reports. Ms. Green, I understand you have something under staff reports.
Yes, sir. We would like your permission to add a site plan to today's agenda.
No.
No. Okay. Yoplait, sorry.
They did me that way, too. They did me that way, too, Ms. Green.
Although, actually, we're nice with her.
Seeing as you've given me your permission, I'll go ahead and pass out some staff comments for the proposed addition. The General Mills site, of course, consists of various types of uses on the campus, one of which is for a Yoplait, which produces the Greek yogurt for all of the United States. So any Greek yogurt that is sold by General Mills is produced right here in Rutherford County on this site. They found themselves in need of building in addition to the existing building, and that addition is approximately 7,440 square feet, and it's a store flavor, a flavor storage addition. So this building addition will not have any impact on the amount of employees on the site, will not generate additional traffic. It would just be a change in the design of the warehouse. I have passed out some staff comments for you. The acreage I have on staff comments is not correct. I forgot to revise that and get you the correct acreage, but I can, of course, do that. The Yoplait building, they're anxious to get started as soon as possible, so we told them we'd bring this up to you. The addition is fairly routine, and so we believe that that can be effectively done easily so long as they meet their minimum standards of both Building Codes and Planning Commission. Also submitted is a small addition to a parking lot. They have an existing employee parking lot, and they are proposing to do an addition to that, which will max out the area that they can use for employee parking. So this will approve both the addition and the parking lot modification. The most significant staff comment is that this addition will be located within FEMA's 100-year floodplain, which is part of the West Forkas Stones River. And as such, it should comply with our Section 34 of the zoning ordinance that deals with floodplain zoning. We would require a floodproofing certificate or other such documents to indicate that they have elevated or floodproofed this building, consistent with our standards. That's also something that's fairly routine for structures that are built in the floodplain. It is not being constructed in the floodway and will have no impact on our floodway. I did include some comments from, generated from the Planning, Engineering, Transportation, and Urban Environmental Departments. I would recommend that you make any approvals subject to all staff comments. And with your blessing, I think they're going to move forward with getting permits in just a few days.
Project Zeus.
Project Zeus.
And I will add that they have been working on their architecture with the Codes Department a little bit. That's been something that's bogged them down in terms of needing to have a variance on some of their building codes. But I think those issues are resolved at this point. This is an element that they need to get moved pretty quick for safety reasons, because of the way the flavors need to be stored. And we indicated we wanted to do what we could to keep the yogurt being produced in our, for our country's needs and consumption.
Yeah. That's right. Any questions?
How many jobs would that add?
I don't know, we'll add any jobs, but it may help to keep some.
There you go.
Just no questions. We're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Any other staff reports, Ms. Green?
Not for me.
I have one.
Mr. Taylor, it's your turn.
Thank you. I spoke with Mr. Balanchandran earlier today about the intersection of Covenant/Brinkley Road and Highway 96. This was an issue that was brought up at our last public hearings, where we talked about the zoning plan for Kingdom Ridge. He's looked at the action reports. There have been several there. And he has also looked at, just did a real quick analysis of the warrants. It is his belief, and it is, and I share that, that with the next section of Kingdom Ridge or the next site plan, whatever comes first, we will need to have a warrants analysis done and the Swanson's start moving towards signaling that intersection. We believe that the tipping point is fast approaching, and we'll be there with the next section.